Good evening, everyone, and welcome to July 11, 2023 Charlton Board of Selectmen Meeting. We can all stand up and press that.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everybody. That's exciting. We have a lot of things to talk about on the agenda, so we're gonna try to go through with it. First, we need to approve the minutes from the regular meeting on May 23rd.
So moved as submitted.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, moving on. Community relations announcements in open forum.
All right, good evening. Old Home Day will be celebrated on Sunday, September 3, 2023, with a rain date of Monday, September 4, 2023. Soapbox Derby, Muggin Hill Road, 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m. And Charlton Old Home Day Kids Fun Run for children's ages 2 to 12. Registration is open online. Tax bills for real estate and property, personal property, first and second quarters have gone out and are due by August 1. Musical performers, Bat Yark, Matt York, The Highwaymen's Songs and Stories, Thursday, July 27, from 6:30 to 7:30, Dexter Hall Auditorium, Charlton Public Library. Longtime New England musician, author, Matt York performs songs of Johnny Cash, Willie Nelson, Krista Christopherson, and Waylon Jennings, and tells stories of their careers. The four songwriters, legends, joined forces in the 1980s to form the country supergroup, The Highwaymen. Prior to that, they each established themselves as stars, and their careers intersected many times in the 1960s. York recently nominated for the 2022 Boston Music Awards for Best Country Artist in his album Bruisable Heart. Was named one of Boston Globe's Best Albums of 2019. Matt lives on the south shore of Massachusetts and has traveled extensively through the years, performing his songs, also doing The Highwaymen Songs and Stories. If you'd like more information, you can check out his gigs on our www.nattyorkmusic.com. Performance is free and open to all. No registration is required. The program is supported in part by Charlton Cultural Council, a local agency, which is supported by the Massachusetts Cultural Council Estate Agency. And then we have one additional announcement. There is an opening for an associate planning board member, the chairman of the planning board. They designate the associate member to sit on the board for the purposes of acting on special permit applications in the case of absence or inability to act or conflict of interest on the part of any member of the planning board. In the event of the vacancy on the board. Interested candidates should submit a letter of interest or a talent bank form to marydevlin@thetowncharlton.net by July 24, 2023.
And now to the appointments and resignations.
Madam Chair, just the form, in case anyone's here to speak.
Oh, anybody here?
Open forum.
Nice and easy.
It was good.
That was quick. Appointments and resignations.
All right, the first resignation is for the Conservation Director position. Attaches a letter from Angela Panassion, resigning her position as Conservation Director effective July 13, 2023. Ms. Panassion has been offered another opportunity and has accepted. The board should accept her resignation, and a letter thanking her for her time with the town has been prepared in your sign folder, and Angela's in the back of the room, too, so, thank you, Angela.
Thank you, Angela. So moved with regret, and good luck, Angela.
Yep, absolutely.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
With regret, Angela. Thank you so much for everything you have done.
All right, the next resignation is for a Conservation Commission member. Attaches a letter from James Allen, resigning his position on the Conservation Commission effective immediately due to personal reasons. The board should accept his resignation, and a letter thanking him for his time with the town has been prepared and is in your sign folder.
So moved, and thank you, Jim.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
The next resignation is for a Planning Board Associate Member. Attaches a letter from Alicia Zeig, resigning her position as Planning Board Associate Member. The board should accept her resignation, and a letter thanking her for her time with the town has been prepared and is in your sign folder.
So moved, and Alicia, you will be missed.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Alicia, for years on the planning board.
The next resignation is for a per diem dispatcher. Attaches a letter from Robert L. Campbell III, resigning his position as per diem dispatcher. The board should accept his resignation. A letter thanking him for his time with the town has been prepared and is in your sign folder.
So moved, and thank you, Bob.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, now on to some appointments. The first appointment is for a full-time dispatcher. Nineteen applications were received for a full-time dispatcher with three interviews held with Chief Dowd, Lieutenant Mason, and HR Director Lynn Dyer. The board is being asked to appoint Lamaris Rosario as a full-time dispatcher effective June 13, 2023. Ms. Rosario has been a per diem dispatcher with the Police Department since October of 2020, 2022. I recommend the board make the appointment.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Find us some good use.
The next appointment is for the Assistant Director of Assessing, with the upcoming retirement of Janet Crockett, who is currently the Assistant Director of Assessing. Interviews were held for her replacement. Three applications were received and interviews offered to two. One candidate declined after accepting another position. The board is being asked to appoint Sue Malone, who is present, as the Assistant Director of Assessing effective July 24, 2023. Ms. Malone has been the assessor, has been with the Assessors Department for five years and has the experience needed for the position. I recommend the board make the appointment.
So moved, and very happy to see this.
Second.
Absolutely.
Welcome.
Yeah, yeah. I'm always encouraged when we can promote from within.
Are you changing desks at this point? No, I guess not.
Do not ask for the bigger room.
The next one is for an appointment for an alternate building commissioner. We have notified that William Fenner, local inspector, has received his certification as a building commissioner. The board is being asked to appoint Mr. Fenner as the alternate building commissioner, so he will be legally, be able to legally sign occupancy permits for new structures in the absence of our current, of Building Commissioner Meskis. I'd recommend the board make the appointment.
So moved.
Second.
Second for discussion, but just so that people know at home, that's what I understand, is this, this is a lateral move financially for him, or is there?
There's no additional compensation for the position. It's only for the ability. A local inspector cannot sign on occupancy permits, but a commissioner has to.
It's more bureaucratic.
Yeah. Okay.
Let's do it again. Did we have a motion?
Yeah, motion.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, the next appointment is for the Old Home Day Committee. Attached are two talent bank forms from Mike Cunningham and Patsy Ridlack, seeking appointment to the Old Home Day Committee. Both applicants have been assisting the Old Home Day Committee and would like to formally be appointed. I'd recommend the board make the appointment.
So moved, and thank you both.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, the next two appointments for the Conservation Commission. There are currently two openings on the Conservation Commission due to resignations that have been received. I met with both, with the two current alternate members, both Erica White and Alan Leon, both present here tonight, and would recommend the board appoint them to the full members. We'll post the alternate member openings once those are filled.
So moved, and thank you, Erica and Alan.
Where's Erica? Erica, Alan, Alan, yes, Alan, my neighbor, Alan.
Wait for a second.
Aye.
Aye.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you both.
All right.
What, ZBA?
ZBA attaches a talent bank form from Marco Tibbory, I got it wrong, right, read it. Marco is here also as well, who is interested in being appointed to the Zoning Board of Appeals as an alternate. I met with Mr. Tibbory. I'm gonna continue to butcher it.
Honestly, I would just give up at this point.
Yeah, yeah. Marco, and would recommend the board make the appointment.
So moved, and thank you, Marco.
Thank you. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Marco.
All right, now the big one. So, reappointments for terms expiring June 30, 2023. Attaches a list of recommended reappointments for the board's consideration. As the board's policy for appointments and reappointments states, I held interviews with some of the reappointments whose board's decisions affect the town and would recommend all persons listed be reappointed for their respective terms. There are few highlighted that we have not heard from yet, and we'll bring those back to the board once we are notified they're seeking reappointment. Sandra Bacon from the Activities Council is asking to be reappointed as an alternate member instead of a full member. Please note that the following are not seeking reappointment. Sherry Detrillan for the Cultural Council, Sabrina Webb, Old Home Day Committee, and Terry Gah, Old Home Day Committee. Letters thanking them for their time are in your sign folder.
Unless the board objects, I'd motion to reappoint in total, meaning that, just one single vote.
I would, yeah, along with, I would second that, but, yeah, but we're taking off, we're gonna postpone the ones that are highlighted.
Correct, yeah.
Oh.
You have a motion, did you?
Yeah, I made the motion.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye. Hi, Jim.
Four minutes early.
No, Madam, Madam Chair, the chairman of the board health, back at the request that, could they come in seven o'clock? There's so many people at the board health meeting.
Yeah, I think so, can we, yeah, sure.
We have a poll hearing, but we'll have to, so make it like 7:05. Madam Chair, if that's all right.
Yeah, sure.
See you, Jim. No, you're not. Madam Chair, you wanna go down to new business?
Yes, so we go down to the new business.
The first item under new business is the FY24 Fuel Procurement Award. Charlton participated in the FY24 Regional Fuel Procurement Program through CMRPC. Prices were solicited for gas, diesel, heating oil, and propane with a guaranteed markup price that'll be added to a base price. Quotes submitted are as follows, and I would recommend the board enter the contracts with the following vendors. Heating oil, Charlton Oil at $0.50 over global market. Propane, Charlton Oil as well, $0.40 over the Selkirk Market. Unleaded gasoline, Dennis K. Burke markup per gallon $0.85 over the NYMEX rate. And diesel, Dennis K. Burke markup of $0.85 over the NYMEX rate. The prices from last year are listed on the memo.
So moved on all.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, the next would be for the 2023 Highway Materials Services and Goods Award Bids. On May 23, 2023, bids were received and opened for the Highway Material Services and Goods. After review of the bids, DPW Director Jerry Foskett is recommending the following bids be awarded. Item number one, buy two minutes concrete type one in place at $81.89 per ton to mass broken stone. It's about a $3 increase, $3.89 increase over the prior year. Full-depth pavement reclamation with application of gallons of liquid calcium chloride as per square foot at a cost of $3.14 per square yard to Murray Paving and Reclamation, Inc. of Holliston, Mass. Again, an increase from $2.39 per square yard last year. And item three, stone seal, double stone seal and 10% asphalt rubber surface treatment at $3.40 per square yard, double stone seal at $5.95 per square yard, and asphalt rubber at a number that, if I didn't scroll up too fast, would be right in front of me. At $4.25 per square yard, all increases from last year. I recommend the board make the contract award.
Well read, Andrew. Motion.
Second, there was a motion?
There was a motion.
The second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Next item, Town of Charlton and Charlton Historical Society Agreement. The town previously held an agreement with the Charlton Historical Society to allow the society to coordinate the day-to-day operation and management of both the Number Two Schoolhouse and the Militia Lot. The town owns the premise and is solely financially responsible for costs of snow plowing, lawn mowing, and other ground maintenance, general liability insurance, utilities, maintenance, and restoration at and for the premise. In discussion with the Charlton Historical Society President Frank Morell, we are asking the board to approve the agreement to allow the historical society to continue to use the building. The agreement is from June 1, 2023, through May 31, 2028. I'd recommend the board approve the request.
Madam Chair, Frank and the team do a great job over there, so I would, a motion to approve.
I would as well, and just for discussion, yes, and they do a great job. And it's a little gem in town. If anyone's ever not been inside that building, it's absolutely beautiful, that's what goes on there. Has anything changed in this agreement in the last five years? It's the same as the boilerplate thing that's here. Okay.
All in favor, then, moving on?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, the next is a request for common victory license for the Dresser Hill Ice Cream Bar, Inc. Attaches a request from Michael Meduca from Dresser Hill Ice Cream Bar, Inc., 290 Dresser Hill Road for a common victory license. I'd recommend the board approve the license with the stipulation that the license is not to be released until the Board of Health and Building Departments have cleared him to open.
So moved as presented, and looking forward to a chocolate wrap.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Doesn't one call it a milkshake anymore? I don't, I respect it. Just saying.
Andrew, that's meduko.
Meduko, thank you. Struggling with my pronunciations today.
All in favor, second, we're only requesting the porker's call, not requesting the authority?
That's all that's required. All right. Flying through. All right, the next item for discussion is for the Employee Appreciation Day. So last year, the Board of Selectmen voted to hold an Employee Appreciation Day in conjunction with Charlton Day at the Woo Socks. Employee Appreciation Day in years past has also consisted of long games, food, and music coordinated by the Board of Selectmen. This year, Charlton Day at the Woo Socks is scheduled for Thursday, August 10, at 7:00 p.m. We're additionally looking to close Town Hall a little bit early at 2:30 that day to hold an employee appreciation event at the Beagle Club prior to the game. What are the wishes of the board?
I think it's a great idea, so moved.
Any discussion? Can we, is that in a bylaw now or no?
It's not a bylaw, it's a policy.
Well, you see, but this is like written now, and it's on the books on that same day?
I'd recommend keeping it as a board policy.
All right, so all in favor?
Aye. Great idea.
All right.
I'm gonna get a sign up for tickets.
Oh, yes. Tickets for Charlton Day are available on the town website if you scroll down. Brand new town website, launched today, under the Spotlights tab, I'm pretty sure that's what we're still calling it, so.
And some percentage of the proceedings is going to the Raze Foundation. Did you know this is the organization we have within the town that supplies the energy for elderly people? Heating and cooling, so how much?
Five, yep, $5 of every ticket sale.
So come, for Charlton, Charlton strong. All right.
All right, the next is for Restoration of Board and Committee Stipends. This agenda was requested by Selectmen Lancet. During negotiations with school on the annual assessment, both the Board of Selectmen and Finance Committee voted to eliminate stipends for all boards and committees in FY24 in an effort to meet the school district assessment. With the failure of the Dudley override and subsequent actions of the school committee on the FY24 budget, the assessment to the Town of Charlton is projected to be less than what was budgeted at the annual town meeting. Is the board in favor of considering the restoration of the board and committee stipends at next town meeting? What are the wishes of the board?
Discussion?
You know, the revised budget came back at 200K left, less than proposed, and, you know, the stipends were part of the balancing. So, you know, at this point, you know, in listening to Mr. Sage's, you know, stance at, at the town, last town meeting, I think for the fruition and stability of people serving Charlton, that it's a valuable, valuable addition.
Madam Chair?
Absolutely agree. We took it away for the reason, the reason no longer exists, so I don't see why we wouldn't give it back.
I agree as well, but, but just so everybody understands, and it was said kind of fast, it's still gonna take fall town meeting to make this happen, because it's a budget item, so we can't, we're not gonna make that decision tonight.
Pasha, through you.
For the recommendation.
Yeah, the only thing I'd add is, you know, I think I was the one that drove this initially and based upon the current reduction. I have no objection to putting it back in in the fall. In fact, I'd even take it a step further and say if you wanted to make it prorata and backdate it back to the election, I'd be fine with that, too. My only caveat is, we still know the school committee's budget is in flux. So as long as it stays below that number, I'm fine putting it back in. But if on the off chance that that number is increased, obviously, I shouldn't say obviously, but I would not be a proponent because we'd be, because we'd be out of, out of balance, but outside of that, I have no problem, and I'll even make the motion to proceed.
But we're also facing the feasibility study money that's no longer needed either.
There's an October meeting, though, right? October meeting?
Yeah, so that would take an action of town meeting in October. Yeah.
So anyway, I'll put a motion to like, you know, to basically put it back in, and again, I mean, I'll do it for the entire year, so anyone who's been, who has been in office since, what, July 1?
Okay.
I agree.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
We've got 10 minutes of the next item.
Madam Chair, I'm happy to talk deregilization, because I don't think it's gonna take that long.
That's for now, right? Let's go there. So old business.
Going where?
To old business, the discussion of deregilization.
All right. I'll prep. So this agenda item was requested by Selectmen Bruski at your previous meeting. The board was asked to consider the use of ARPA funds for the study of the process and impacts involved with deregilization from the Dudley-Charlton Regional School District in recognition of Dudley's inability to meet the level service budget request. Preliminary quotes have been obtained from qualified firms who perform similar work, and the scope, a study of this scope would be in the range of $20,000. With the future of the Shepherd Hill Regional High School MSBA feasibility study, sorry, with the failure of that feasibility study, $237,000 in unallocated ARPA funds is currently available.
So Madam Chair, just very briefly, this is not an indictment upon any group, any, any town, any board, et cetera. This is simply a matter of taking a long look, I mean, and I'll be candid, I'm not a, I'm not in favor of deregilization. I don't think financially it's gonna come back and make much sense. However, with the failure of the Shepherd Hill feasibility study, we're back to square one. And I think it behooves this board just at least commission a study to see what it would take, because we're all gonna be asked the questions of, well, what happens next? Why don't we go on our own, et cetera, et cetera? Because I don't know what future budget seasons will bring with Dudley, but people are gonna continually ask the question, and I think much like everything else, we should be a data and quant-driven board. And at least by commissioning the study, we'll know exactly what our options are, inclusive of what's it gonna cost to buy out Heritage and CMS? What's it gonna cost to potentially build our own high school, or partner with a, with some other third party? Or whatever options might, might, might also be out there for us? So this is simply fact-finding. I'm not looking to say, hey, let's draw a line in the sand and get this to town meeting. This is a, let's find out what it really takes so we, so that the town as a whole has an appreciation for what it means and what it could impact.
And that $20,000, that gives us all the options, complete digitalization, the partial, right?
That, based off the scope of services provided, and based off of other studies that have been done, it should give a scope of what would be required, you know, both financially and operationally to.
For the all different options. Yeah, I'm just gonna put out there, I'm all about it. So I'm all about building our own school. This is just the beginning of the problem. We all know, we went there, we went to the meetings, guys, you've done tremendous job, and kudos to you. But this is just the beginning, and I just don't see this getting any better in the year coming, so I'm all about it. But for now, I'm all with the study.
Yeah, yeah, I think as far as the study's concerned, I'm all for it. It's, we don't know what we don't know.
Exactly.
So we have to find out some information, and we have to really know what we're up against, and so people, this has been talked about in town for a decade, probably every other year from what I'm hearing, and it's just never really grabbed any teeth, and nobody ever really looked into what the obstacles were. We've heard from the, from the district level what the obstacles are, but I think if we have an independent study, we have a better idea of what's going on. And in my, in my head, it wasn't, regardless of what's going on in Dudley right now, and I take my hat off to them, and they're, they're, I've watched a lot of their meetings, they're in tough, they're in, they're in some tough spots. It was the feasibility study that really drove me to this, because now, not only, not only, it doesn't, it appears now they're not only willing not to pay today's bills, they don't even wanna think 20, they gave away $60 million in grant money, basically, by not funding a $400,000 feasibility study that was reimbursable, so to me, that's.
Yeah, and I just wanted to piggyback off, Bill, I think we need to definitely get some hard numbers out of, out of the study. One is the total cost of, the cost of deregilizing. What is it gonna cost us to deregilize? I think our second, second number is, what is gonna be our capital core course to be a standalone district and the process of reas? Because I couldn't find anything on establishing a district, it's only a region, so I think we have to go through the same process as a regionalization presenting to DESI and everything, everything along those lines, so what does that cost? And I also think we should expand upon it and find, what is the cost to find another partner? So I think we should have, you know, a number of options and not just get a number to throw out there. The other thing, I think we have to look at it from a qualitative perspective, and do we have the critical mass of students to be a standalone district? So, you know, inherently, we're not gonna, we're not gonna be able to offer everything, because we're not gonna have enough students to fund a full band, to fund a full, you know, soccer team or whatever, so I think we have to include those, those qualitative perspectives in the study as well.
With the population growth, it's not gonna happen tomorrow, it's gonna happen, whatever, within five, 10 years, so we need to project on that, too, so that'll be a part of the study, too.
I mean, I mean, do we have a CAGR for expected population growth with incoming new business? I mean, I.
Yeah, but that would be something.
It's a good question, one that, when you look at the census, you would expect a larger percentage coming in, but until Amazon and other things come, it's like.
Yeah, I don't think that's necessarily, I mean, I've looked at other towns around us, like three or four, and they're right around the same size as Charlton, and they're standalone, they're standalone districts.
I mean, we have schools.
Almost, almost right around the same level, you know, 300, 400 kids in middle school, 450 kids in high school at that district.
So Madam Chair, I would make a motion, at least for discussion, to commission a study up to, but not to exceed $25,000 without approval of the Board of Selectmen to study a deregilization option, or options. Yes, coming from ARPA. Everyone should know that we're not taking money from pure tax dollars. This is the residual ARPA funds that we were going to use for the MSBA feasibility study, but with its failure, that opened up.
And I'm just, I'm just gonna add one more thing that I didn't think about before, but it's, people are, people that have shot this down before said, well, you'll never spend $100 million on a high school. We may not need to build a high school. Maybe we just need to find one. You know, it might be just as simple as that. It's not, it's not impossible.
And in fairness.
You get to think out of the box, because it's.
And in fairness, it may show that we should stay with Dudley and just deal with it, too, so, like I said.
Correct.
I just don't see that working for us in the future, that to me, and I don't mean any disrespect for any time, I served on those boards for 17 years, and I have, you know, emotional attachment to the town. This is a stagnation, this is never gonna happen, you know, it's not gonna move up, and we are moving up. We are moving up all the time, and hopefully we'll continue on growing. Different options is what we wanna see, right, and then we, this is just, every discussion has to start somewhere, right? Every plan has to start somewhere, and if underperformance of Dudley, then probably we wouldn't have had that discussion. So that's my 10 cents. I just don't want my children, when I say my children, my children have passed that school system pretty much. My children of the town, I don't want them to drive 45 minutes on the bus and then being, in a sense, penalized for unperformance of another town that we are part of. That's my 10 cents.
Anyway, like I said, my motion stands, up to $25,000.
Second.
So, all in favor?
Aye.
Moving on.
Around 7 o'clock for polls.
Right on. All right, 7 o'clock poll hearing for Snake Hill Road. Attached will find a request from National Grid and Verizon, New England, Inc., requesting permission to install two joint-owned poles on Snake Hill Road. Also attached is the notice that was sent to a Butters. This request has been forwarded and approved by both the Police Chief and DPW Superintendent. No comments or concerns have been received as of now. The chairman should open the public hearing by reading the notice as sent to a Butters, and I'd recommend the board approve the request.
Public hearing notice, the Charlton Board of Selectmen will hold a public. Public hearing notice, the Charlton Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, July 11, 2023, at 7:00 PM in the Meeting Room 1 Town Hall, 37th Main Street, Charlton, Mass., 01507, to act on a request from the Massachusetts Electric Company due to business as National Grid and Verizon New England Incorporated, requesting permission to locate poles, wires, and fixtures, including necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures along across the following public ways. Snake Hill Road, National Grid, to install two JO poles on Snake Hill Road, beginning at point approximately 360 feet east of the center line of the intersection of South Bridge Road and Snake Hill Road, and continue on approximately 1,000 feet in east direction, installing two new poles, number 850 and number 250 along Snake Hill Road. They are also asking for permission to lay, maintain underground lateral cables and wires in the above intersected public ways for the purpose of making connections with such poles and buildings. Of each of the said petitioners may desire distribution purposes. Anybody wishing to be heard on this matter should appear on the date and time specified via Zoom or submit concerns in writing.
Do we have anybody on this one?
Yeah. Hey, folks.
These new poles are proposed to be set due to the new Amazon facility.
Oh, Madam Chair.
Could you introduce yourself?
Thanks.
I'm Gillian Riley, and I'm a representative from Leidos Engineering, who is doing the design work on behalf of National Grid.
My name is Zishu, I'm representing National Grid.
Oh, cool. Thanks for coming up, both of you.
Thank you.
So these new poles are a part of the project to bring power to the new Amazon facility. It's a part of the work for National Grid to install a new substation along Snake Hill Road. These three poles are to support the new clearances required for the double circuit install and to support the structural analysis of the poles.
Madam Chair, I'd ask if anyone in the audience or online has any concerns?
You didn't say?
Hearing on motion to close the public hearing.
Thank you very much for coming. It's always good to see the faces, you know, whenever.
Is there, yeah, was there already a vote or was it?
No, I, we have to close the public hearing first and then we have to take a vote.
Okay.
So my, so my initial motion is to close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve the application.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Thanks for coming out.
Yeah, everyone.
But, but one quick question. How is, how is the substation coming along?
Currently, it's coming along fine. The designs are essentially all finished, it's really up to construction. And it's going to be a temporary substation at the moment until we can install it correctly. And, yeah, this substation is really going to hop out from that area just because they can take off the load from the existing, the existing sub or the existing mine right now. So those were diversified, so that should be all.
Oh, that's, that's a neat idea. So temporary substation is a transformer with wheels on it and then?
Essentially.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Yeah, that, hey, if it works, yeah.
Right, it's a temporary, so we can.
Yeah, until you can get, until you can get delivery on the.
Right, exactly.
That's, that's neat. It's neat. It's good to know, too. Thank you.
Cool. Thanks, guys. Stay cool.
So can we go now back to the scheduled appointments?
All right, we.
I don't see Jim back there.
Jim not back yet? Okay.
Jimmy.
Tree Warden, Tree Warden. All right. Uh, Tree Warden.
Oh, Tree Warden.
Yeah. So as previously discussed during the most recent town election, there were no successful candidates for the position of Tree Warden. In many other communities, the position of Tree Warden is appointed, is appointed by the Board of Selectmen and typically falls within the jurisdiction of public works. A change to this position from elected to appointed would require a vote of the town meeting. What are the wishes of the board in moving forward with this position?
That would also be in October.
That would have, at minimally, would have to be considered in October. If not, next, your other option is to find a resident qualified and appoint them for the remainder of the term to have a tree warden in in the position.
Yeah. Sorry.
I was going to say, did we put an announcement out that we were looking for?
Not formally, because this has been kind of an ongoing discussion since the position wasn't filled, just to more or less, do we want to pursue the, this to be a permanently appointed position versus a elected position?
Yeah, so Madam Chair, generally, I don't like to change appointments from elected to to actually appointed by things. But I think this is one of those, it's so esoteric that it probably makes sense to just bring it in-house so that we have the proper licensing with the proper insurance. And it's just a matter of supply and demand. I just don't see a lot of people with this type of experience and credentials in who are, who would want this spot. So I'd make a motion that we pursue a bylaw change come October.
I would second that.
All in favor in discussion?
Aye.
No? You don't want to be the tree warden?
Nope.
It's a good idea. I agree.
Hey, Matt.
So that's that. And now we can.
No, I'm sorry. Asha, I'm sorry. Did we actually take a vote on that? I just want to make sure we're all official.
Second. All in favor?
Aye. Sorry. It may have been me.
So now can we, yeah, Jim is here.
Six forty-five Board of Health joint appointment. So with Mr. Landset being elected to the Board of Selectmen, there's a need to fill a vacancy on the Board of Health. Two requests were received from Catlin Veer and Bain Booker. The Board of Health held interviews that rolled to consider each candidate, the split vote of the board at that time. Upon scheduling interviews before the selectmen, Mr. Booker indicated he would not be prepared for the board as outlined in the attached email. Ms. Veer is in attendance this evening. The vote for appointment must be done jointly and by roll call by both boards and term, and the term expiration date would be until May 2024 town election.
Hi, how are you doing? I'll let Matt speak, he's the chairman.
Poor Matt, he tries so hard to lay low.
Thank you for having us. So as you know, we have an opening in our, in our board and we need to come to a resolution on that sooner than later, especially since it's a three-member board and when one, one member is out, it makes it difficult to have a consent consensus. So there's been an application process, there's been an interview process, and basically we had two people that came to the table from the town. It was posted in the newspaper and whatnot. And we had, one of the candidates was Mr. Bain Booker. He interviewed with us and we also had Catherine that interviewed with us. It's my understanding that Bain did not want to attend the second interview. And he told me that he would take the position if, if it was granted to him, but he did not want to go to a second interview. So with that being said, we have for consideration Catherine. So I don't know if anybody had a chance to review her resume, but I know specifically in the medical field, it looks like, you know, all A pluses and very, very qualified in that department. John and I, we had a, basically a split decision on the voting. And it was, we both, I think both felt, and correct me if I'm putting words in your mouth, John, but we were lucky to have the candidates come forward that we did. We didn't think there was a bad choice. So it wasn't, it wasn't anything like that. It was just that he felt one way, I felt one way, didn't have enough to to seal the deal. And so the recommendation now lies in the select board's hands. So there you have it.
What was the reasoning behind the Mr. Booker not coming to the second interview?
Um, the reasoning that was explained to me, and I don't want to put words in his mouth either, is that I think he felt that the recommendation of Catherine came from a board member, a select board member. And I think he felt he didn't have a chance on getting elected because of the recommendation.
That saddens me. For somebody to think, think that way, it's a little upsetting, to be honest with you. We all read everything, all the resumes, I'm sure everybody did. I did for Catherine, critical care, transfer register nurse, health policy leadership, masters in public, it goes on and on. We will be honored and very happy to.
So, well, we have to take a vote regardless.
Well, so. I did read the resumes, very impressive. Mr. Gagnon, I won't speak for anybody else either. I'm disappointed that someone would think that because this board, and I believe the Board of Health as well, prides itself on not getting into patronage, if you will, and going for the best candidate, period. And so I'm also very disappointed that he's not here. From Ms. Veer, I did look over the resumes and it was incredibly impressive. Barring any other comments, I would move, if that's what we require from this board, to appoint Ms. Veer to the Board of Health's open seat.
This is a roll call for us. Are we going first or you guys go first?
Still can make a motion.
It's, it's your, yeah.
Well, I mean, I think either way, I think the reality, I mean, historically and through the chair, is that when you have multiple candidates, at least other boards I've been on, you literally say whom your preferred candidate is and you just take a, like, a tally as you go.
I am a strong proponent of people coming in in front of us or any board, you know, especially new people coming in. I personally want to know who we're working with. And I'm sure that people, you know, in the town also would like to know that. So just for coming in, you know, I truly appreciate that, everybody who came in today.
I would agree. I don't know either candidate who applied.
So do you want to start with the Board of Health and just go this way?
Yeah, I think.
Well, I made a motion, but I have to second it.
I'll second that motion.
So we have a motion and a second, now you can go around, right?
Yep.
Yep.
Are we going first or the Board of Health is going first?
I don't know, I think they might.
Yeah, I think so, too.
Just to clarify, our meeting is open. We had a meeting in the other room and we took a recess. So we, we moved it from our Board of Health and we came to this meeting jointly. So our meeting technically is still open.
Wonderful. So.
So, John, start with you.
In case you don't know me, John Sandborn. My vote is for Catherine Veer.
Matt Gagnon, to be honest, I thought that the other candidate was well-rounded in other aspects of the board, definitely, probably not the medical side because she blew it away. And I was the one that had suggested going with Bain. But I agree with you that I think the second interview was the right thing to do. And if they were serious about the position, he should be here today. So for that reason, I certainly, my vote is with Catherine as well.
All right, now up to us, guys. David?
David Singer, aye. I guess I've made the motion to.
My vote's for Catherine.
But we have to, yeah. Catherine, welcome, thank you so much.
I vote for Catherine as well.
I vote for Ms. Veer.
Welcome to the show.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for putting your name out there.
Thank you so much for having me.
Thank you for dealing with Matt and John.
Yeah, yeah.
Don't push it.
And I would like to thank the board for bumping us around a little bit. We had a full room over there and it was much appreciated. We're wrapping up some business over there.
We could have brought them over and.
You could have, you should have.
We don't want to deal with your.
Don't worry, they'll be here, don't worry.
Eventually.
Catherine, good luck.
You're good with us?
Oh, yeah.
We're good, thank you so much.
Now, you want to close your meeting now?
We're going back.
Oh, you're still going back.
There may still be some.
Yeah, Catherine, just remember to get sworn in tomorrow.
What was that?
Just remember to get sworn in tomorrow.
Okay.
Or whenever.
Okay.
Congrats.
Thank you. So the planning board, that's, we're holding on to August meeting on that one. Okay, so that's that. All right, moving on. Where are we now? GPW Superintendent's election process, all business.
All right, so we received 12 applicants for this position. Interviews were conducted, were offered to six qualified candidates, three internal and three external. One of the three external candidates informed us just prior to his interview that he had accepted a position elsewhere, and we feel prepared to bring candidates forward to the next step. In our deliberation of the candidates, we felt that the best next step would be to conduct a second round of interviews involving two members of the board that could bring a final candidate up to the full board for consideration. I'd like to know how the board would like to proceed with this process.
So just so I have an understanding, so from 12 applicants, the six were rolled out, then we got six for the interviews. Then we interviewed three, you interviewed three? No, now we.
No, we interviewed five.
We interviewed five and now we're down to three.
Yes.
Okay. Guys, any discussions? What are your?
I'll just say two reasons why I think I should not be. One, I don't know the resumes, but I may know of someone who I'm friendly with who applied. So I don't think, I mean, I could still, I think I would be fair, but it may be perceived differently if I were to move someone forward ahead of somebody else, number one. And as you've seen tonight, I do a lot of fires at work and I cannot come during the day and I'm, won't have the same flexibility someone else might have right now.
Just a quick, I'm sorry, just a quick question. So you're going to, so whoever's on this board is going to interview five people or three?
Three. Three finalists.
So interviews were offered to six qualified candidates, three internal, three external. One of the three informed us just prior they accepted a position elsewhere. So we're, so this.
We feel confident in ruling out two of the candidates.
Thank you, that's where I was getting.
Sorry.
Okay, no, 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 no.
It's a word problem.
Missed a sentence.
Yeah. No, that's fine. Yeah, I, I think having, well, I suppose there's really two options for us through you, Asha, that all three come in front of us and have a conversation, or we do the subcommittee, if you will, to make the work. I'm fine either way.
If we will go with the subcommittee, if we will interview people, two of us, with you, we interview people in the office, then they will, are they still coming in front of all of us after that or?
The idea being that the person that the two members of the board felt most comfortable with moving forward be a single person considered by the entire board versus having open deliberation about the potential candidates in an open session.
Yeah, nobody wants to do that.
I actually disagree with you on that one. I would, I mean, when it comes to a department head, which I consider to be, for all intents and purposes, a C-level exec, I think it's important for all five members of the board, unless there's recusal, to be able to ask questions and to be able to, and I think there's a kind way to do it.
Yeah, of the final candidates.
However, I think it behooves us, and, and, you know, we always talk about transparency. In my, you know, one-fifth opinion, I think it's important that the citizens recognize that, yeah, we're, this is one of our appointments and all five of us should be making our individual determinations. I mean, what you're just proposing is probably a much more kind way to do it, quite candidly. However, my preference, now that I think through it, would be I would rather have all three candidates come to us and we all ask the same question and we honestly, we, then we just take a vote. Doesn't mean we don't dislike two people.
We don't take a vote that night, we just take our notes and go back and then have a discussion and then come back.
Do maybe half deliberation in session.
Yeah.
Or, once they're in front of you, it's open session deliberation.
Yeah, I would. Wouldn't say it has to be that night, but I would recommend it be that night.
Yeah, but we can, we can, we have the resumes and everything.
So, the only, the only thing I would disagree with Bill on is in the event that someone is applying, and I don't know if it's the case, because I don't even know who the six were. I just know someone I know may have been. If they did, I don't even know, so I'm not sure who the names are. But the only time I would disagree with Bill on having them come before us in a public session, open meeting, is if someone in those three was already at another highway department for another town, and I would not want them to come to that meeting until maybe they were the finalist of the final two, then have them come, because if, once it gets out that they were looking, if they didn't make the final two, it may put them in a bad place. That's the only reason I would disagree with Bill on that. Other than that, I have no problem in doing what Bill suggests and having them come before the full board, and if it turns out at that time that I know it might be friendly with one of them, I may have to step back, but since I don't know who they are, I'll decide. I have no problem doing it Bill's way.
I would just say that we do that now for the town administrator, we do that now for the superintendent of schools, we do that now for, you know, multiple positions, that once you reach finalist stage, they come in front of you for interviews, and that's just how it works. But again, I'm not going to throw myself on a sword on this one. I mean, you know, if, if the majority wants to do it with two people, I'm fine with.
I agree with Bill. I just figured, for me, finalist means the last two, it's between two people. If you still have three people, narrow it down to two and have the two come before the board.
Okay.
That was the only difference.
No, no, I get it, no, I get it.
Get two finalists to come before the board.
I want to hear what you, what you got.
I, either way, I, but, but if, but like what David said, if, and obviously, there's a good chance that if there were local people, there's a good chance that we all know who they are, or, or maybe one of them, that that wouldn't just be you. I don't know if I, I like the idea, but what do we do with, um, we've, we've hired other department heads without interview, going through the interviewing process. Of course we have.
No, not level.
Dan Dow.
So, those you have assessment centers, and you have to take the highest score. So, there's really, you don't really have the choice. So, you could be best friends with one of the candidates, and if they score number two, it doesn't make a difference, they didn't score highest on the assessment center. So, even though it's an assessment center instead of a civil service test, you're still required to take the high score.
And when it came to Dan, he was already number two in command, and we framed it that you, you were internal, and had to be sergeant, I believe, or above, and Dan was the only one.
And the chief was also removed from civil service, correct?
Oh, oh. So, just to make things easier or harder for people, I'm going to make a motion that, for at least for discussion to vote, because if it loses, it goes the opposite way, that, that the final three candidates come, come, come in front of this board.
I'll second it for discussion.
Yep.
So, I have no problem doing it Bill's way, and I'm willing to go with, with what makes the board comfortable.
Pete?
Yeah, no, I, I can empathize with Selectman Singer's point with being sensitive to their, you know, personal needs or personal scope, but I also, you know, we're here to represent the town, and what's best interest for the town, I think, is Bill's, Bill's position, so.
All right, so we have a motion second.
Yep.
Aye.
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 Aye. Moved.
So, we'll have to schedule that at their convenience.
Okay.
I mean, I suppose in theory, we wouldn't have to do it all in one night either. I mean, we could do it in two nights, because I would hope we would ask the same questions as everyone to keep it fair.
Sure, make it complicated.
That's what I do. But Andrew, good idea, by the way. I don't want you to think I'm like, you know. Where's Lynn? She's probably yelling at me. Hey, Lynn.
Number four, under old business.
That is.
Yep.
That's going to be coming back out of executive.
Yeah, so we're going to be, well, after, right? And we're coming back for it? Okay, so that's on a point four on the under old business. All right, so policy review.
Uh, I got nothing. There's a long enough meeting.
Town administrator.
All right, going quick here. So, website update. Today, we did launch the brand-new website, so it's got a nice new feel to it, same, same host as we had before, so not as much of a headache of trying to move things around, but there's still a few moving parts with it, but you'll notice a brand-new feel if you look at it today, as of 10 o'clock this morning. Community center update. So, the community center feasibility committee is continuing to press forward with their work. Recently, they've moved forward with T2 architecture to conduct a space needs assessment and conceptual design, and present an estimated project cost at a preferred site of Ford Dresser Hill, and a kickoff meeting is scheduled with the architect for July 26. The Wusox Town Takeover, again, mention it again, mention it again, Thursday, October 10, 2023, is the Charlton Takeover Day at Polar Park. Each ticket purchased through the link on the town website will benefit the Charlton Rays Foundation and contribute toward Charlton standings in the 2023 Wusox Town Takeover Competition. In, yep.
August.
August. Yes.
They've got the chiefs here.
Yes. All right, cemetery garage design. So, Cemetery Commission have been working with Bay Path on the design build for a new garage at Westview Cemetery, and unfortunately, Bay Path will be unable to fit the project into their schedule due to the demand on the program, so at this point, we're working with the Cemetery Commission to bid out the design and receive estimated costs of the building at this location, so more to come on that. Small bridge program application for Turner Road over Little River. I just want to express a note of gratitude to Jerry Foskett and the team over at McClure Engineering for submitting a grant application to the small bridge grant program for the replacement of this bridge. We're hoping to be successful with the grant, but just want to thank them both for their efforts, and a pay-as-you-throw technical assistance. We've been working with our agreement with Casella for the complimentary use of the Oxford Transfer Station due at the end of the year. We've been working with Mass DEP to consider alternative services that could be available once the program ends. We have already taken care of the municipal side, but looking at what's available to the residents. We have been awarded a technical assistance grant from Mass DEP to evaluate the implementation of a pay-as-you-throw program in the absence of the Casella transfer site, and look forward to working with Mass DEP on this evaluation.
Andrew, does that end, end of calendar year or end of fiscal year?
Uh, calendar.
Cool. So, as of December 31, as of right now, Charlton residents won't be able to use the Oxford station?
For, for its complimentary use.
Correct, yes, sorry, yeah.
Complementary use.
And then, and then what is pay-as-you-throw? So, is that, is that kind of a hybrid?
That's a.
Our own transfer station, but you pay for every bag you?
That's a pay for a bag, and you can all, they would only accept the bags.
In Oxford or somewhere?
At a, a location to be worked out with Mass DEP with a, with a bet.
So, Madam Chair, through you. Andrew, have we, and I'm forgiving, but I don't know, we may have already had this conversation. Have we discussed with Casella extending it into the year?
I've reached out to them, and essentially, they've acknowledged that that's the end of the agreement. We've worked out the terms to at least continue our trash service at, at a negotiated fee, but it will be the end of the actual service for us at that.
So, they have no interest in continuing that service for Charlton residents?
Correct, for free.
Which they may consider when they renew their contracts for trash.
Why wouldn't we, have we signed a contract with Casella yet for the next, or we're still negotiating?
We've come to an agreement on the.
For our, for the municipal.
For just municipal trash.
Have we signed that agreement?
We've moved forward, yeah.
I'm wondering at some point why we wouldn't just put this out.